And Lee Paxton, 4797 Bristol Circle. And Lee Paxton.
I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County Board. Is there a motion to certify? Wait, are we live?
Yes ma'am.
Is there a motion to certify closed session? Dr. Beers, would you make that motion please?
Yes, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge.
The Williamsburg James City County Board.
Is there an echo there? What was that?
There was an echo. Dr. Beers, go ahead and please certify closed session.
Yes, should I start again?
Yes, please.
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge. The Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook, would you please second that?
Second.
Here in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza, would you please? Call the roll.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Young.
Hi.
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Ms. Cook.
Hi.
Ms. Ombi.
Hi. Okay, moving on to work session and regular meeting. Item 3.1, adopting procedures for electronic public meetings. Ms. Hummel, would you please move that we adopt this resolution, which is found in board docs?
I move that the school board approve Resolution R 1620, adopting procedures for electronic public meetings.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Moving on to item 3.2, Ms. Serza, please take the roll.
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here. Item 3.3, approval of the agenda. Ms. Hummel, would you please make a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda as presented and that the school board certify and approve that all agenda items for the April 21st, 2020 meeting are necessary either to address the COVID-19 disaster or to assure the continuity of government and that the usual procedures cannot be implemented safely or practically.
Madam Chair, I second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to modify the agenda to pull item 7.02, financial report and monthly bills and payroll to an action item. If Mrs. Hummel, would we be okay with that on the, as an amendment to her motion?
Yes. Do you want me to do the new, the new motion?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
And Mr. Dowell, you're good with the second?
I am, thank you.
So, is there any additional conversation about pulling financial report and monthly bills and moving that to, I guess that will become item 8.1 under action? Hearing no additional discussion. Everyone understands it's part, we're just going to add that on to Ms. Hummel's motion. So Ms. Serza? Can you call the roll?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Okay, before we move on to the superintendent's announcements, I did just want to share a little bit of information for our listening public. So obviously due to the COVID-19 pandemic and resulting temporary suspension of board policies and in respect to social distancing and public health, the school board is combining their work session and regular meeting into one meeting per month to conduct essential business. With our new normal includes conducting business virtually and in an abbreviated way, we do want the public to know that we value your input. There was an opportunity for the community to, to call in and leave their thoughts, but wanted to let the community know that you can always reach out to me or any board member through email or text or phone calls. We do want to hear your thoughts. At the beginning of this meeting, we would typically vote on various resolutions, which are so important, but in response to COVID-19 and with a focus on essential business only, there will be no resolutions today and obviously no activities to celebrate these in our schools. But I did want to verbally recognize our teachers, our school nutrition employees, our school nurses, and our school librarians. The board greatly appreciates you, especially during this time of uncertainty. And with that, Dr. Heron, I will turn it over to you for announcements and the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Today we launched virtual instruction and a fourth quarter unlike any other in the history of WJCC schools. The focus is on teaching the essential skills and knowledge by grade and by course to enable students to move up to the next grade level. Instruction takes place for a dedicated period of time, Tuesdays through Fridays, and on Mondays, teachers prepare lessons and take part in professional development to support virtual learning. Using View, the WJCC schools' electronic classroom, teachers are delivering instruction through a combination of pre-recorded videos, activities, and other approved digital resources. Learning packets are also available for families without internet service. The curriculum instruction staff have partnered with our excellent teachers to make all of this happen, and I really want to thank them for their work this evening. To date, we've distributed almost 1,000 laptops. A limited supply of laptops is still available and will be given out at each school by appointment. So if you need a laptop, please contact your individual school. Also, we've partnered with the Williamsburg Regional Library to provide internet access for students, and we are launching our own pilot, Wireless on Wheels, this week. Cafeteria staff assisted by custodians, some bus drivers, and other very dedicated staff have distributed over 30,000 meals in the last five weeks. We are incredibly grateful for the teams that are on the front line serving and making sure our students don't go hungry. We were also partnering with, partnering with Meals on Wheels to make deliveries to local motels where some of our homeless students are staying. As you can see, there are a lot of moving parts right now. To keep parents and staff up to date, we have launched weekly newsletters for both families and employees, and we continue to update our website resources at wjccschools.org/coronavirus. We are grateful for an excellent communications team who have worked diligently to get vital information out to families and staff. In the midst of this, we are acutely aware of the challenges ahead, in particular with regard to budget. In this fiscal year, we are anticipating a drop in funding as the local sales tax dedicated to schools will decrease significantly, potentially up to $3.5 million in the next three months. In addition, there is uncertainty regarding continued full funding by the county and city for schools for the remainder of this year. And because of this, we've already taken several cost-saving measures that I want to share with you this evening. We've implemented a hiring freeze for all non-essential personnel. We've initiated an approval process for all purchases over 5,000 to be approved by the chief financial officer, and for all purchases over 10,000 to be approved by me. We will spend only on essential items needed for continuity of business or continuity of instruction or for things related to safety. We've stopped the payment of spring athletic stipends after the first part of the season. We've stopped most academic stipends and payment for temporary workers such as tutors and substitutes. We have postponed major purchases, for example, the purchase of school buses. We've issued a 90-day suspension for large capital projects and placed a hold on the majority of the fiscal year 2020 capital projects unless they are safety-related. As yet, we really don't know the full impact on school funding for next year. We do know that we may be facing substantial reductions in revenue from both the local government and the state due to the economic impact of COVID-19. This will affect our budget and strategic priorities for the next year. We will inform you and plan appropriately as soon as we have more information. In times like this, I really believe it's important to say thank you and look outwards as we face some of these challenges together. Want to thank families and parents this evening for your support and the work you are doing with students at this time at home and for your patience as we cope with the technology issues and everything else going on. We really appreciate partnering with you as we continue learning for our students. And I want to say a special thank you this evening to WJCC Schools Foundation, who just awarded a grant to the division to purchase 50 laptops for students to support virtual instruction. We really appreciate you reaching out and your generosity and support at this time. Finally, I want to leave you with news that will make you very proud. WJC Schools is stepping up to support our community by helping to create masks and face shields for local hospitals and assisted living communities. The outreach has been coordinated by the Williamsburg Regional Library. WJCC teams from nine of our schools are using 3D printers from the schools to print either shields or straps that are then delivered to the library for distribution. For example, Jennifer Kimbrough, computer resource teacher at JBB, has already printed 40 shields. The library has received requests for 900 masks already, and that number is expected to grow. WJCC Schools is proud to do our part to support the healthcare workers. These are our frontline heroes in our community, and we really appreciate everything that they are doing for us. Madam Chair, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Heron. This is an opportunity for citizens' comments. I understand we had four citizens call in. So I'm going to pass it on to staff to have those comments read, audio. The audio will be played.
And Lee Paxton, 4797 Bristol Circle, Williamsburg, Virginia, 23185. I have serious concerns about there not being any grades for the last quarter for the high school students. Personally, not being able to raise one's grade could impact their college acceptances, could impact how much money they get for scholarship or lack thereof. What about students who are not passing the class at the end of the first marking period for this semester block? It just seems like it's really depriving our students of the opportunity to improve their GPA, to encourage them to do their best to get college scholarships, or some may, as a result of this, be in danger of losing their scholarships or losing their college admissions. So please reconsider this, particularly for the juniors and seniors, where GPA and grades translate to college acceptances, scholarships, and dollars and cents. Please help us all in this difficult time. Thank you.
Then, my name is Jeff Bauer. I live at the 4th Avenue of Bristol Circle, Williamsburg, Virginia. I have a senior at law school, and apparently will not have the opportunity to increase his grades over the last part of this year. I find this disturbing, and that the other opportunities are valuable, but now he does have the opportunity to increase his grades. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Bauer at 15 Hampton Key, Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm calling on behalf of my wife Julie and myself. We have three students enrolled in the WJCC school system. We'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for giving us a chance to make a public comment. We're calling to express our concern about a failing school in Williamsburg James City County, James River Elementary School. According to the Virginia Department of Education's School Quality Profiles, James River continues to fall further behind its state and division peers in every subject area, reading, math, science, and history performance. When our children started at James River Elementary School in 2012, according to schooldigger.com, James River Elementary performed better than 61% of the elementary schools in Virginia. As of 2019, according to the same source, James River Elementary now performs better than only 17.5% of elementary schools in Virginia. Similarly, the standard of learning SOL average score reportedly has dropped from 60% to 26% over the same time period. Further, the James River student population has dropped almost 10%, and the free and reduced lunch student population has increased by 13%. The recent precipitous fall appears, this is Jeff Bauer continuing my message that I think was cut off prior to three minutes. The precipitous fall appears to have begun around the time the division began to de-emphasize the International Baccalaureate Program, which has led to the division discontinuing the MAGNET program and potentially eliminating the IB program. These programs, as we understand it, were put in place years ago at James River Elementary in order to rescue a failing school from the same problem their removal is now causing. The issue is compounded by a striking enrollment socioeconomic and cultural imbalance among the division elementary schools. Each year, James River Elementary continues to have the lowest enrollment, about 450 students to almost 800 at Matoka and Stonehouse. James River also has the largest percentage of free and reduced lunch as well as ESL students and the largest chronic absenteeism rate in the division. Something needs to be done. As the division recognized under similar circumstances many years ago, the Board of Education should commit to and fully fund the IB and MAGNET program for James River or redistrict the WJCC elementary schools in order to bring balance to our school population. At James River and presumably other failing schools, the focus is to meet the needs and raise the test scores of failing students, but as a result, the average and higher-level students are not having the needs met. This is Jeff Bauer, and I needed just 30 seconds to finish my thought. It's not right nor equitable to have so much disparity in terms of enrollment and educational opportunity between the east end of Williamsburg and the west end. All county children are entitled to the same quality of education. The board should act now and not overlook this glaring gap in our schools. As John F. Kennedy famously said, "A rising tide lifts all boats." Thank you very much for your consideration.
Catherine Shields, 104, Enson John Udi, Williamsburg, 23185. I would like to point out that Governor Northam closed the school buildings, not the schools, yet we will have our school year shortened by six weeks, four weeks before virtual instruction begins and then the two weeks we will lose in June. The virtual instruction appears to cover about 20 to 30 minutes of academic material a day, four days a week for only six weeks. I would consider these six weeks essentially lost as well, so all in all, our students will have missed 12 weeks of instruction. If a student missed six to 12 weeks of school during a regular school year, I assume it would be difficult to justify moving that child on to the next grade level. Why are we treating this missed instruction time any differently? Have you considered operating the schools during the summer for all students to make up for these lost months? Williamsburg James City County students have gone five weeks with no remote instruction. Although we've been told that these things take time, I know that a relative of mine was teaching her first grade class virtually, starting on March 16th in Virginia Beach, which was the first day that school buildings were mandated to close in our state. After waiting patiently for five weeks, the virtual learning content that was launched today appears to be subpar. What did you plan to close the gap between our county and other cities and counties within Virginia who have seen a much more robust response to ensure continuity of education while the school buildings are closed? How much effort are you putting into planning for a worst-case scenario situation if the school buildings remain closed going into the fall? Surely, we are seeing cost savings by not having the buildings open and running. Will you be deploying those financial resources elsewhere, perhaps to ensure we are using cutting-edge software that is meant to be used as a long-term virtual learning platform? I know I speak for myself and many other parents I know when I say that I will expect more live content to be provided if this continues this next school year. Live virtual instruction by a person trained in early childhood education should be the bulk of the remote learning that our students are receiving. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I believe that concludes our public speakers, and we thank the community for sharing their thoughts, and we're glad that our technology staff were able to create that platform so that we could hear from our public. Moving on to proposed agenda items, one of the things that had planned to be on our agenda, as Dr. Heron mentioned, were buses. And so we had buses that were approved, we purchased with last year's money, using year-end spending, and that has been removed from our proposed agenda in response to economic situation we find ourselves in. So I will move on to 6.1, which is the Resolution R-15-20 Temporary Suspension of Policies and Regulations. This is something that we are doing based on recommendations from the Virginia School Board Association. We don't want any of our board policies to conflict with information that the governor has given us or declarations that have been made. And so looking at board docs, you can see exactly which board policies would be temporarily suspended just during this time that we are responding to COVID-19. Are there additional questions or thoughts about the resolution? Because we will be voting on this once it goes, once we get to action. Mr. Kelly, I'll do round robin.
So what is the, what is the length of the suspension of the policies?
There isn't, there is not an end date. It's there, it says that it's temporary in response to COVID, so it's, it allows flexibility. My guess is it, we would revisit this most likely in June after the governor's stay-at-home orders have ended, which ends June 10.
Okay, well, currently ends June 10.
Well, right.
So, just seems to me that we should have a, we should have a date that we go back to revisit it just so that we make sure that it's truly temporary, but.
So, we could add language in there that, can we, can we add language in there and vote on it tonight that says we relook at this at the June meeting? How to? Mr. Kelly, how do you feel about that?
Why don't we say at the July meeting, since that's the next fiscal year?
Okay, so at the July meeting, we will revisit?
Yeah, so why don't we just say that they're temporarily suspended through July 1st?
Okay.
I don't know. I'm, I'm just willing to, I just think we should have some date in there to so that we know that they're temporary.
Dr. Beers, what are your thoughts on that?
I agree. I think July 1st, that's a good date.
Okay, Ms. Cook?
I would say June 30 to be in line with the authority that we gave Dr. Heron to make budget transfers. But I do think it's inherent in this that it is temporary, because as soon as the situation and the emergency orders go away, I think so does this, but.
Okay, Ms. Young, what are your thoughts?
I do agree that there should be a date that it comes back to the board. I'm happy with either June 30th or July 1st.
Okay, and Ms. Hummel?
Same thing. I, I don't care between the June 30th and July 1st. I think having a date would be good.
All right, and Mr. Dowell, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I follow that. My only question is if we're fortunate enough that the governor rescinds that June 10th order earlier, do we then come back and roll this back before that June 30th mark? Is that the plan?
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. So we could have language that says, I don't know, at least, like until June, we'll be revisited on June 30 unless, unless the governor's declaration.
Why don't you say honor before June 30th?
Honor before.
I like it.
All right, honor before. All right, so that's our new language, and so we will, we're not going to revisit this at the next meeting, so just everyone remember that that language will be added into that resolution, but we are going to go ahead and vote on it tonight. So if everyone is in agreement with that, I'm going to move on to item 6.
Madam Chair. Yeah, so if we do add a date, does that suggest that this is in force even if the governor changes anything? So in the, in the time between the governor changing his executive orders and the school board being able to meet, to take action on this, then that's, we're in limbo then, right? Um, as it reads now, basically the governor's orders are the ones that direct our need to suspend specific policies that are in conflict.
Madam Chair.
And so if we, if we then take that power and put it back into us and say, this doesn't change until we change it, then there could be a gap between the governor's action and ours.
Good point. Dr. Heron, was that you I heard?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to give some information that it does impact more than school board policies and meetings and things like that. Obviously, it affects clock hours, honor rolls, it affects some summer school criteria, it affects retention timeline, annual testing, absence attendance reporting, which goes right to the end of school, and some of those actually impact how we do summer school as well. So we've done a preliminary review of all of our policies in the light of the decisions we're still in the process of making with a state of constant change. So certainly, I wouldn't want to maybe recommend that the board doesn't follow the governor's timeline, but actually looks at it at the June meeting so that we can make adjustments if necessary with the board about time.
So, so the June meeting is the 19th? Is that correct? The 16th, so the board meets on the 16th of June?
Correct.
So, so it sounds like Dr. Heron is okay with the date of honor before June 30, recognizing that we're going to meet on June 16.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Heron's comfortable with that? Ms. Cook, are you comfortable with that?
If Dr. Heron is sure.
And so I'm assuming everyone else is comfortable because they were just a few minutes before?
Oh, good.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, so that, that will be noted in the resolution? And we will vote on that shortly here. So I'm going to move on to item 6.2, Special Education Annual Plan 2020 to 2021, and title B flow, flow-through funds, and I think Ms. Barrow will be presenting. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Dr. Barrow is with us this evening to present the Special Education Annual Plan, and I think she's going to come onto the screen right now, and the presentation's coming up momentarily. Thank you, Dr. Barrow.
Thank you. Greetings, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, it's always a pleasure to come before you each year to review the proposed local special education annual plan. You should hopefully have a draft copy of the local special education annual plan, Part B flow-through application, and this presentation will provide a brief overview of the provisions within. Sorry about that. I don't know why it's doing this. I don't know why it's doing this.
Ms. Cox, do you want to try and bring up the PDF version out of board docs? Is that possible?
What if we just do this right here?
That's perfect. That works.
Okay, there you have it. So the Special Education Annual Plan is a regulatory requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act of 2004. And it serves as a formal agreement between local school boards and the Virginia Department of Education regarding the provision of special education and related services for children with disabilities. Each component of this plan must be approved in order to receive these federal funds. As required by the guidelines, this plan was shared with members of the Special Education Advisory Committee on April 7, 2020. The federal funds provided to local education agencies under this plan may only be used to pay the cost of providing special education and related services to children with disabilities. In WJCC, these funds are used solely for special education personnel. There are two separate and distinct funding streams referred to as sub grants in the Special Education Annual Plan. Section 611 is applicable to school age children with disabilities in grades K through 12. Section 619 applies solely to preschool age students with disabilities. While there are different amounts allocated to each sub grant, the total amount of these federal funds allocated to school divisions is formula driven and takes into consideration historical federal funding, total school enrollment, and poverty level. New allocation amounts have not been released. In light of the fact that the new allocation amounts have yet to be released, the 2020-2021 Special Education Annual Plan is based on the amounts awarded in the 2019-20 school year. That amount is $2,144,833. The amount allocated to Section 611 sub grant, again, which applies to school age students in grades K through 12, is $2,116,591. Section 611 sub grant identifies the special education personnel whose salary and benefits will be paid with these funds. That includes 21 special education teachers, six speech language pathologists, six special education teacher, special education teacher assistants, a part-time parent resource center coordinator, and 20% of the K-8 literacy coordinator's salary. That is based on the portion of time dedicated to supporting the needs of students with disabilities. Section 619, the preschool grant equates to $28,242. You'll notice it is significantly smaller and it is used to cover a portion of a nurse's salary serving students with disabilities in the Bright Beginnings program. As you may have seen in your review of the application, there are various required components. While the majority are fairly straightforward, I will talk just briefly about a few of the most noteworthy provisions in this application and report for the 2020-2021 award year. In the application itself, divisions are required to report on implementation of the 2018-2019 annual plan. As you will see, it is noted that all federal money allocated in the annual plan for 2018-2019 was utilized for the salaries and benefits of special education personnel. Historically, our division has used these funds for special education personnel, and that continues to be what is proposed in the 2020-2021 annual plan. The next noteworthy provision is maintenance of effort. This federal regulation requires divisions to budget in each subsequent year at least the same amount that it actually spent for the education of students with disabilities in the most recent or preceding year. It includes costs above and beyond those required to provide regular education programs for non-disabled students. Some of these costs could include specialized services, unique equipment, materials, personnel, just to name a few. In order to be in compliance with this regulation, there are four tests to determine if the division is in compliance. School divisions either have to spend the same amount or more of local dollars, local plus state dollars, local per capita dollars or per student with disability, or local plus state per capita dollars. And only have to meet one of these tests in order to be in compliance. As you'll see on this slide, the amounts listed here are projections based on the division's 2020-2021 preliminary budget and were provided and confirmed with our finance department. A quick comparison of maintenance of effort amounts suggests that we will meet the means test in all four categories by spending more in the upcoming year based on those projections. The amounts listed in the column entitled difference slash increase illustrates how much more we are projected to spend in each category or MOE test area in 2020-2021. And as you can see, there are stark differences in the top two lines in the locality. Again, bears the lion's share. The federal child fund regulations require local school divisions to identify, locate, evaluate, and then provide services to children who reside in our locality who are in need of special education and related services. That obligation also extends to children who are parentally placed in private schools and homeschooled by their parents. The proportionate set aside requirement states that the local education agency must spend a proportionate amount of federal funds on providing special education and related services to these students. There are 57 students who have been identified as having disabilities and are parentally placed in private schools or homeschooled. The average allocation per child is $1,119.43, which makes our total proportionate set aside amount $63,807.66. That is an increase of about $6,413 from last year, where there were 48 students who were in this category. It's important to note that speech language therapy is the only direct special education service provided to students who are parentally placed in private schools or homeschools. Accordingly, as noted in these, in this section, these set aside funds are used to cover a portion of the salaries and benefits of the speech language pathologists who provide these services to these students. The proportionate set aside amount is a part of the total Section 611 sub grant allocation. Following your approval, this application will be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education by the due date of May 8, 2020. We can expect to receive preliminary award amounts by July, and the final award amounts are typically released by October. Once approved, this plan takes effect July 1st, 2020, and runs for 27 months. All allocated funds, which are dispersed twice a year in July and October, must be spent by September 30, 2022. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Dr. Barrow, you always do such a thorough job of explaining the Special Education Annual Plan. I will just do round robin and, and start with Mr. Dowell. Do you have questions for Dr. Barrow?
Just one question did come to mind. So we see, I guess, a little bit of an increase in our, our student services for speech language services for students that are homeschooled or in private education. Do you get, does the school division get a, I guess, I don't know if it's a notification or what's the process like for those students that are not a part of the district to come in? And how does that look like for for planning, I guess, for, for purposes of this application for planning for the subsequent years?
So if, if a parent or anyone who has a relationship with the student suspects that a child has a disability, the process is that they notify the administrator at the school in the zone in which they reside, and they complete the child find process. So they go through all the evaluation and eligibility processes. And then we collaborate with either the private school provider or the parents, if they are homeschooling students, to develop what's called an individualized service plan and provide those services. Again, the only direct service would be speech and language therapy, but any other services that a child might need are consultative. So we include those numbers based on students who have gone through the eligibility process, and there is an individualized service plan for them.
Okay, I appreciate that. That helps me understand. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Just to clarify or maybe add additional information based on what Mr. Dowell just said. So Dr. Barrow, and maybe this is what you were getting at, Mr. Dowell, is, is there a way to project from year to year, how many students we will be serving for speech and language that aren't in our schools?
Unfortunately, there is not a way to project. The child find process has no timelines. It's open 24/7. So we get referrals all the time. Parents can refer during the summer. They can refer during times when schools are not open and operating. So there's no, really no good way or way that we've been able to identify to be able to project what those numbers look like.
So there's not an open enrollment period, so to speak?
Well, there, the timelines are fluid. So at any point in time, if anyone suspects that their child has a disability, they can make that referral. There's no cutoff period for any of that. So.
Okay.
But Dr. Barrow, just adding to that, we can look at trends, right? So is that, as, as we have seen that our, our special ed population has trended up in recent years, have, have, I can see there's been an increase from last year to next year. Has that continued to go up? Has it, does it fluctuate?
So I, I actually have in front of me proportionate set aside some trend data. So the numbers do tend to fluctuate. I'll go back as far as 2015, 2016. There were 49 students who were parentally placed in private schools or homeschools who met that criteria. Then in 2016, 2017, there were 35 students. The following year, 2017, 2018, there were 38 students. Last year, there were 48 students, and this year there are 57. So while we certainly can look at that trend and think, okay, it's probably going to go up. There's probably going to be an uptick. We certainly won't be able to capitalize on an exact number.
Thank you, Dr. Barrow. Ms. Hummel, do you have additional questions or comments for Dr. Barrow?
First of all, just thank you once again for all the work that you put into this. I just had a general question about these private schools because I read in the paper that some of them might be going out of business. Have you read that as well? And I didn't know whether that would have an impact on, on our ability to find appropriate schools for these children that need this kind of personalized attention. And then my other question was, we're, you're sending all of this in on May 8. How do you think the, the federal state, I guess this is federal, right? The federal government would would possibly be affected in whatever money we get based on what's going on with COVID? So those are my two questions.
So I'll take your first question first with regard to the private school. So there is a distinction between a private school and a special education or private, special education private school. So schools like Williamsburg Christian Academy or Walsingham, those are private schools that.
Yeah, I'm not talking about those. Okay. I was talking about what was in the paper, and they were the schools that, that the school systems refer to, and the school systems are actually the ones that are paying.
Correct.
tuition. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, okay. So there's, there's only one that I'm aware of that has completely gone out of business. As was shared at a meeting that I just had today with the Virginia Department of Education. I know that there continues to be discussion around whether or not localities will continue to pay the funds for the students to be educated in those settings when students, when they're closed. So that's about the extent of what I can tell you about that. I wish I had an idea to be able to weigh in on what I thought the federal government was going to do. I can tell you that in terms of award amounts in previous years, the amount that we received in 6B funds for the 1920 school year was about $32,000 more than the previous year. And there have been slight upticks of that nature going back as far as 2016, 2017. So I'm optimistic that that will continue to go in the right direction. But it's hard to really kind of know what they'll do. It is formula driven, the amount that we get, but they don't share the formula. So there's no way that we can, you know, do our own calculation. They, they tell me that it's based on a variety of factors, but that's why we base the plan off of the amount that we got in the previous year. So hopefully, we're not disappointed in thinking that we're going to get more and not be able to cover what we need to cover.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Young, do you have additional questions for Dr. Barrow?
Yes, I do have a question about, you stated that right now, the service that, that WJCC provides is speech and, is speech therapy. What, what have, you said that other services are consultative. What, what exactly does that mean?
So the only direct service we provide is speech and language therapy. That means providing a speech and language pathologist to provide specially designed instruction for students who have that disability. Consultation means our educators and professionals working with the educators in the private school sector, working with the parents, providing consultative advice, giving suggestions on strategies, but no direct work or training or teaching or anything to the student, consulting and providing guidance in that manner.
I mean, I'm just confused because if a student is, has special needs, what I hear you saying is that we're not responsible for those students other than consultative and speech therapy unless they're in WJCC schools? Is that, do I have that right?
Yes, ma'am. Students who are not enrolled in our schools are not entitled to the full scope of services. The only service, the only direct service they're entitled to, which is outlined in this plan, is speech and language therapy. So they would have to be enrolled in WJCC schools in order to get the full scope of educational services. And many times we see students, parents deciding to place their students, enroll their children in our schools in order to get the full scope of those services. Our obligation is to identify those students, but it's a parent's choice what educational setting they want to have their child in.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cook?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Dr. Barrow, for your wonderful presentation. You mentioned in it that you shared this with the Special Education Advisory Committee members, and unfortunately, they haven't met since February. So I'm curious, did you get any feedback from any individuals on that committee about this?
We did not get any feedback. We had our Parent Resource Center. I worked through her to disseminate it to the members of the Special Education Advisory Committee. She also followed up to see if there was any feedback, any questions, and we have not gotten any feedback.
Okay, so I'll take that as, as support. I also appreciate that you included in your report, and you mentioned that the local government really bears the brunt of the cost of this. And so I just wanted to hone in on maintenance of effort. We're in some uncertain financial times, but that maintenance of effort test, we have to hold true to that, right? So in other words, we can't, we can't pull back our investment in special education. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we need to remain committed to that, into those kits.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Beers, do you have questions or comments for Dr. Barrow?
Yeah, I actually, a couple of them have already been answered. But one of them is, I noticed with the. But one of them is, I noticed with the numbers that you put up there for the preschool sped kids, that seems to be our fastest growing population of special ed kids. But what struck me was that small amount of money that was part of the salary of a nurse. Do we not get more special ed funds from the state or the feds to deal with those kids? Or does that come out of our? Well, I don't know. Can you answer that? I guess that's, that's, why is that so low?
That I wish I had the answer to. I can tell you, just looking at the trends, it has been as low as $21,852, which is what it was in 2014, 2015. It has never exceeded, has never gotten to $30,000. And again, it goes back to the information I shared about it being formula driven, which is the formula that we don't know. Those two different subgrants, obviously, Section 611 is covering K through 12, which, you know, is obviously more students, but you are absolutely correct. Our preschool population is busting at the seams. But that has not been anything that has driven this number up in any way. Well, I I take that back. We, there was a slight increase of $1,488 from 2018.
I guess I'm I'm having a really hard time understanding that because we've got, just about half of our bright beginning kids are, have qualified for special ed assistance. Are we not using special ed funds? Or are we not requesting special ed funds from the state or the feds to pay for the teachers, the other resources that are being used with those young students?
Dr. Beers, if I could interrupt for, if I could intervene for a moment. We do get some funds at the state level through VPI and we can certainly provide the board what funding we receive as opposed to what the program actually costs and we can provide that for you.
Because I just, you know, I, I because my, my, well, I don't know if this is correct or not. The funds that you, you know, the figure that you identified for the non preschool special ed kids, are the majority of those funds from the state and feds or is the majority of those funds from, from us?
Are you talking about the the sub grant funds?
Yeah, yeah, the other, that other big category.
The sub grant funds are federal funds, the 2 million. Yes, those are federal funds.
That's what I don't get. That's, for me, there's a, there's a disconnect there. We're getting federal funds for those kids. But as far as I can tell, we're getting no federal funds or very few federal funds for those preschool handicap kids. Is that, am I, is that accurate?
There are likely other funding sources that are not applicable to 6B. I think the VPI is one, but in this, with regard to this specific grant, it is a nominal amount to cover the preschool portion.
Yeah, see, I just, because they put, you know, they created the cat, the feds created the category that you, that you have to educate and serve preschool handicap kids. They do provide funding for the K-12 kids. Are they not providing, you know, funding for preschool kids? Preschool handicap kids?
Not through this particular grant. What I shared is the only federal funds that they are providing through this grant, but they're likely other funding source.
Okay, so there may be other sources of federal funds that we're using with preschool kids?
Dr. Beers, the only funding I'm aware of is at the state level of VPI, but we'll certainly bring you that information and give you a sense of what the state pays and what the locality pays. But there is a lack of federal funds in in this area.
Yeah, that's just, I just really, I don't know why that really struck me that it's a very important category. And for the locality, for locality to to cover that, because that is a substantial amount of money. We've got, well, we have, as I understand, we have about half of the 400 kids that are in our preschool program receive special ed services. And so that's a lot, that costs a lot more than $28,000.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's, I, that's, I'm just, it's from my information to do with at some point, something.
Yes, I think, I think Dr. Beers, like with even K-12 education, that the federal government's portion is even for K-12 is is less than 1%. Is that correct, Dr. Heron?
That's correct.
So.
Right, and and it's not so much that it's federal or state, it's like external funding. So the state is putting up so many, are we getting, you know, a portion of that for the preschool? I just find it, you know, sort of, it's ironic that we have a governor who and his wife have really pushed this preschool early childhood programs, then there's going to be funding. And of course, I don't know what's going to happen now, but I, I, I just, I just find it ironic that that is not also being directed to preschool handicap kids. That's all, that's all I want to say. I just, I was just curious.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. And so Dr. Heron, the VPI that you were referring to, that's the Virginia Preschool Initiative. So you can get the board additional information so they have an understanding of.
Absolutely. There is, there is, there is funding at the state level and we will provide that for the board.
Yes, just to reiterate again, the feds, the feds have fallen short on pre-K-12. Right, Mr. Kelly, do you have additional comments for Dr. Burrow?
I do. As always, thank you, Dr. Burrow. You always do a great job in explaining these, this grant to us. When you get to jumping off from where Mrs. Cook was on the maintenance of effort projections. And so we have, we have pretty substantial increases in the local and the state funding going forward to next year. Can you give us a little feeling for what those increases are? So page nine, you talk about 785,000 increase in local and million dollars in local and state. And that just, what's the genesis of those?
Um, I would certainly want to get some additional information from finance. But as I mentioned, just briefly, that includes things such as specialized personnel. We often have to enter contractual obligations for things like huge speech transliterators and things of that nature, specialized equipment, our transportation cost to provide transportation to and from some of the private schools in Richmond and Hampton. That is not a cost that is assumed by any other agency other than the locality. So things of that nature, I don't have an exact breakdown in front of me, but I can certainly work with finance to provide some more details in that area.
Okay, I'd appreciate that because as we go forward to with the challenges that are going to be facing us in the next year's budget, we need to make sure that we understand the, the, the secondary impacts of any budget cuts we're asked to look at or we have to look at. But thank you and thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
And so, Dr. Burrow, just adding on to what Mr. Kelly said, is it, is it fair to say though, that that the proposed increases are based on the students that we have now?
Correct.
Right, so, so we know the students that we, that we have and the needs, and the needs that they have. So that's, that was, that's what it's based on. And then just going back to something that Ms. Hummel said, and then you just mentioned it too, with respect to the, the private special ed schools that are serving some of our students with disabilities. Can, can you give us kind of off the top of your head, or if not, you can always supply it later? But I'm curious, what, what's the total number of WJCC students that, that are currently served in special ed schools outside of WJCC?
So for our separate public day regional program that we have with New Horizons, there are three programs there and we serve 22 students there. And for our private day programs, where we have schools in Richmond all the way down to Hampton, we have about 24 students in those programs.
So the, so the total number of students that we're serving outside of WJCC and specialized schools for students with disabilities is less than 50?
Correct.
And, and those schools, including New Horizons and the ones that run from Richmond to Hampton, are we, are we currently making payments to those schools now for the, for those student spots, even though they're not in school right now?
We are currently making payments. Those students are participating in virtual learning opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Burrow. Are there additional comments for Dr. Burrow?
Lisa, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
What, what kind of schools are these? I mean, between Hampton and Richmond, that's quite a long distance. But what is the school in Richmond? What's the school in Hampton? And I know that one of the programs at New Horizons is autism, I believe. But what are the others?
So New Horizons has three programs. They have a program, Center for Autism. They have a program that serves students with emotional disabilities and intellectual disabilities. And then they have a program that is solely dedicated to students with significant emotional disabilities. So those are the three distinct programs at New Horizons. The special education private day schools, there are a couple of them that we use in Richmond. There's Charter House, there's Faison. In the Hampton Newport News area, we use Rivermont. That is a program that serves students primarily with the disability category of autism. But these are programs that serve our students who have the most high intensity needs in terms of behavior and things of that nature. So whenever, you know, there's not, we don't have the capacity or the skill set that they need to be served in WJCC, we move along that continuum. And that is one of the continuum options that we are able to utilize.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there additional questions for Dr. Burrow? Okay, hearing none, I believe we're going to move on now to item 6.3, the Carl D. Perkins Grant, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to introduce Ms. Walter this, this evening, who's going to present the Perkins Grant and our local plan for that and associated budget and some of the data associated with the Perkins Grant as well. Thank you, Ms. Walker, Ms. Walter.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron and members of the board. The Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act focuses on improving the academic and technical achievement of CTE students and strengthening the connections between secondary and post-secondary education. Perkins affords states and local communities the opportunity to implement a vision for CTE that uniquely supports the range of educational needs of students, exploration through career preparation, and balances those student needs with the current and emerging needs of the economy. Each year, we are required to develop and implement a local plan for CTE in order to be eligible for funding. This plan has been reviewed and approved by our 21st, by members of our 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, and I will be presenting the plan to you this evening, which is broken up into sections referred to as schedules. There are a total of 18 schedules in addition to the annual performance assessments in the Perkins Local Plan. And hopefully you all have a copy of the draft of the proposal of the local plan that was provided. In alignment with our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, the Perkins Five Plan supports academic achievement and college and career readiness, educational equity and access for all students, and communication and engagement of a variety of stakeholders. The 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is made up of representatives from each of the stakeholder groups listed on this slide. The advisory committee, which meets throughout the year, has been involved in the development, implementation, and evaluation of WJCC's CTE programs and local needs assessment, which occurs every two years. We would like to thank all members of this committee for their dedication to CTE and for reviewing, providing input, and approving this year's local plan virtually on March 27, 2020. Their participation in this committee provides invaluable insight and a wealth of knowledge and resources for which we are truly grateful. A list of specific members of the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is listed on Schedules 1 and 2 of our local plan. Part of the Perkins Five Plan includes an examination of WJCC performance on identified standards in comparison with the Virginia agreed upon performance levels. This information is broken down over the next two slides and can be found on pages 25 and 27 in the local plan. When reviewing the slide above, a CTE completer is a student who has met the requirements for career and technical concentration or specialization and all requirements for high school graduation or an approved alternative education program. Special Populations is defined by nine different categories a student may fall in, including students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, and students with parents who are active duty military. In the slide above, you can see that WJCC met and exceeded Virginia agreed upon performance levels in all categories identified here. Additionally, WJCC experienced significant growth in a number of performance areas from the 2017, 2018 school year. The levels from 2017 to 2018 can be found in parentheses next to the 2018, 19 levels in the slide above. Areas of growth are identified in green and include the student competency, competency rate, special populations participating in one or more board approved credentialing test, completers taking and passing credentialing test, completers passing credentialing tests, completers who passed a credentialing test, plus the completers who earned an advanced studies diploma and did not pass a credentialing test. Here you can see that WJCC met and exceeded the Virginia agreed upon performance levels in all but one category. While WJCC experienced significant growth in multiple performance areas from the previous year, which are indicated in green, in the final category of non-traditional career preparation, WJCC's rate was 20.75%, which fell below the performance standard of 28.1% and is indicated in red. This category refers to the completion rate of students in state identified courses for non-traditional career preparation or preparation for an occupation where individuals from one gender comprised less than 25% of total individuals employed in that occupation. For example, females taking computer information systems or digital electronics or males taking Introduction for Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow. In 2017, 18, changes were made in the designated state identified courses for non-traditional gender, which impacted our performance in this area when many of our course offerings were removed from this list. This year, the course designations have changed once again and some of the courses WJCC offers are included as non-traditional courses once again. We believe this will help us in the 2019, 2020 performance rates. Areas of significant growth above include CTE completers who completed CTE programs and graduated from secondary education and CTE completers successfully transitioning from secondary school to employment, military, or further education. Previously, we've discussed credentialing tests and pass rates through the performance assessment. Here we take a more specific look at those credentials. Above is a sampling of the 67 different types of credentials taken and earned by WJCC students in 2018, 2019 school year. Here you can see a breakdown of these industry, industry credentials earned by WJCC students in the 2018, 19 school year. As a comparison, you can also see the growth as a district in this area from the 2017, 2018 school year. Additionally, each year, we are required to submit a career pathways plan of study aligning specific academic and technical coursework at the secondary and post-secondary level with an identified career cluster and career pathway that meets the needs of industries in the state, region, or local area. This is reflected in Schedule 3, which can be found on page 31 of the local plan. For 2020 to 2021, WJCC submitted a plan of study representing the health science career. For two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, WJCC submitted a plan of study representing the Health Science Career Cluster and Therapeutic Services Career Pathway. This plan of study offers a pathway that highlights WJCC's expansion of CTE coursework in the Health and Medical Sciences strand in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. This new plan of study specifically includes WJCC's new Health Science Dual Enrollment Courses being offered in partnership with TNCC. Schedules five through ten, which can be found on pages thirty-seven to forty-eight, refer to our Perkins-supported program areas as seen on the slide above and allow us to identify activities we use to improve academic and technical skills of students, which is Schedule Five, provide students with work-based learning opportunities, which is Schedule Six, develop, improve, or expand the use of technology in Schedule Seven, provide professional development to teachers, counselors, or administrators associated with the CTE program on Schedule Eight, use performance standards to continue to improve the performance of these CTE programs on Schedule Nine, and improve, expand, or modernize each particular program area on Schedule Ten. Schedules eleven through fourteen, which are found on pages forty-nine to fifty-three of the local plan, include narratives providing further explanation and details about our CTE program and the information we have already reviewed in this presentation. This is a review of the entitlement of funds over the past several years. You can see that this year's Perkins application is based on the amount of funding we received last year. Once the state determines WJCC's actual allocation, we will submit a grant amendment that aligns with the new funding amount. The state receives their allocation of federal funds and then applies a funding formula that determines what each locality will receive. This formula is based on the number of students who reside in the school division and also takes into account the number of students aged five through seventeen who are from families below the poverty level for the preceding fiscal year. Schedules sixteen through eighteen, which are found on pages fifty-five to sixty-three, are the areas in which we develop the budget for WJCC's Perkins allocation. The percentage, percentages indicated above are the breakdown of usage of the entitlement of funds shared on the previous slide. As noted in the slide, we have budgeted forty-one point four percent to go to capital outlay and equipment. These funds are used to refresh labs, provide hardware and software such as three D printers, Spiro robots, and Vex Robotics kits for all CTE programs. Thirty-two point eight percent is budgeted to purchase services or services acquired from an outside source. These include professional development, student activities for our special population students, and New Horizons Regional Technical Center. Twenty-two point six percent has been budgeted for indirect costs and other charges such as conference registration fees, travel, and lodging, and professional organization memberships. And three point two percent is budgeted for personal services, which is used for administrative support for CTE credentialing. This concludes our formal presentation of the Carl D. Perkins Local Plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Mr. Kelly, I'll begin with you.
I thought, thank you, Ms. Walter. I appreciate the, uh, the presentation. Um, I'm, I have no questions.
Thank you. Dr. Beers, do you have questions for Ms. Walters?
I, I also am, uh, in, impressed, not just with the report, but the increase in the number of students that are taking advantage of that. So kudos. That's really great to see.
Thank you. Yes, it's great. It's a great report.
Ms. Cook?
Also, thanks, but no questions.
Ms. Young?
Yes, yeah, thank you. And, uh, I, I'm happy to see the increased number of students that are obtaining, obtaining credentials. That's going to help them later in their career. And thank Ms. Walters for her time.
Thank you. Ms. Hummel?
Uh, thanks again for, uh, all the work that goes into this. This is like a massive, uh, tax preparation vehicle. That's, uh, every time I see this, I think that, um, when you go back to the industry credential slide, the one that shows all of the different, yeah, that one, um, do we have the breakdown somewhere? Excuse me if it's maybe in a report or something of, like, how many of our students, uh, get which, you know, just, I, I just would be curious. Uh, for example, how many students got the AutoCAD two thousand industry credential or the carpentry credential? Uh, do we have that breakdown somewhere?
Yes, it's not, it's not housed within the Perkins Local Plan, but I do have it, um, in a very thorough Excel document. Um, and, and would be able to, uh, put it in a more readable fashion for you to share.
I'll just, I'll follow up maybe with a school board question about that. I'm just curious about it, just so we can see kind of like where are our students interested? Uh, in what areas are they getting credentials and then maybe, uh, track, track that and, and wonder like, why? And, um, also for some of the people who are hiring, uh, is it tied to potential job opportunities for them? For example, the suspension and steering, um, or all the surface technology? Is it, is it, is, are the industry credentials tied to success in getting, um, a technical job after graduation? So that's
Tied to employment.
Right. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mr. Dowell?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Walter, thank you for this report. I appreciate it. I did just have one question. Um, and I might be, um, confusing information. Uh, I think it's on, it's on my, uh, page eight, and I think you, uh, were talking about Thomas Nelson and a, is it the new program that they're beginning for, for, um, healthcare? Is that right?
Yes, we have worked, we've partnered with Thomas Nelson, WJCC has, and, and created three, um, new pathways and courses for dual enrollment that students can take um, at Thomas Nelson beginning next year.
Have we heard from them? Are they still planning on holding those courses?
At this time, uh, yes. We haven't heard, uh, that, that it won't be happening. Um, so yes, at this time, yes.
Thank you. And thanks for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. And Ms. Walters, uh, just adding on to what Ms. Hummel said, um, with the Excel sheet that you could share with us when we ask, uh, an SBQ, I would be curious to know, um, which of the certifications students can obtain here, um, in Williamsburg, James City County, and which ones they are obtaining through New Horizons.
Sure.
Um, and then even getting down to like which ones are at the Woodside locations and which ones are at the, the other, what it's a Hampton location.
Okay.
So any additional questions or comments for Ms. Walter? Hearing none, we will move on to six point four, um, award contracts to Mobili's Modular Space Inc. for temporary mobile educational classroom trailer at Jamestown High School and Stonehouse Elementary School. Dr. Heron? Is Dr. Heron on mute?
She is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Schlecht is going to present this item this evening and provide information about the, the lease for, uh, temporary classrooms.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. I am pleased to present tonight's proposed agenda item, which is for the, uh, this request is to install a temporary mobile classroom trailer at Jamestown High School and Stonehouse Elementary School. Um, each mobile trailer will be a two, contain two classrooms, um, and one at Stonehouse will contain an element, um, a restroom. The James City County Board of Supervisors approved the special use permit, uh, on March the tenth. The mobile educational classroom trailers, uh, will be provided under annual contract server, service by Mobili's Modular Space Cooperative Contract Number two zero one, two zero three dash two. Uh, the monthly lease for these trailers is six hundred, one thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars each per month. Uh, and the funds will be accounted for out of the operating budget for FY twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. I will begin with Mr. Dowell. Do you have questions for Mr. Snipes?
I don't. It's good to see you, Mr. Snipes. Thank you.
How are you doing, Mr. Dowell?
Good. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Hummel?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mrs. Young?
I do have a question. Um, I, I was reading the SBQ by Ms. Cook, and if we decided not to proceed with this, I'd like to know what, uh, modular space prepar, I mean, I know there, there's been preparation made for these, uh, trailers or these modular spaces already, but what are they? What preparation has been made? Am I?
We, we have begun, um, with the process for, uh, Mobili's to be, begin to bring them to us. Um, we've done a site design and a site plan. Um, the next steps are site work.
Okay, but site work hasn't started.
No, no site work has not started yet.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, given that this is coming out of fiscal year twenty-one, uh, and, uh, what would, and we don't know what that looks like right now, um, what would happen if this decision were delayed a few months? Is it possible to install mobile classrooms, um, you know, a few years into a, a few months into a school year as opposed to in August? Is there, is it possible to delay it a little bit? I think, um, that would be incredibly disruptive for instruction because it would be a reconfiguration of classrooms in, in mid-year, which is very disruptive to the younger students in particular. Um, I think the cost is about thirty-nine thousand per year, and yes, that is a, maybe a lot of money next year, but if we don't do it next year, we may be in overcredit situation in those two schools for several years to come. Right. I, um, I have no doubt that the need exists for these two trailers and, and, and many more. Um, I, I have more questions about that at another time. Um, you know, we went through that as part of the discussion around, uh, the tenth elementary school, and I really applaud the staff's efforts to, um, to, uh, get ahead of this and, and start working in this fiscal year towards next fiscal, fiscal year, and I really appreciate all the hard work. But because, um, the, the outlook of fiscal year twenty-one is so uncertain, I'm just not prepared to support this at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Um, Dr. Beers, do you have?
Yeah, I, the only question I have is, uh, do we have the funding available right now to install this, uh, mobile classroom?
The funding for the setup of the mobile classroom for the actual, uh, site preparation, I believe, is there? Mr. Snipes, if you'd just confirm that for me.
Um, the funding for the furniture and other items are, are there, but the site plan, um, the site work, we would need to, um, Ms. Ewing would have to respond to that. Ms. Ewing, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, anyway, but yeah, I'm sorry.
Hello?
Yeah, the funding is available at this year for the preparation of the site.
My feeling is, let's do it. I think, uh, we do need it. I, I think it's, it may be more crucial than some other things, and I would not delay. I would do, I would get started on this as soon as you can.
Thank you. Dr. Beers, Ms. Ewing, did you want to add in?
And no, I was, I was going to say that there would be funding available in this fiscal year. It would require a budget transfer out of, um, utilities to cover the costs.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Mr. Kelly?
Uh, yeah, I think these trailers are overdue, particularly at Stonehouse. And, and obviously at Jamestown too, so, um, and it's a, it's cost is, to Dr. Heron's point, I think was thirty-nine thousand, five hundred for next year. Um, and I think that's, that's justifiable, even in the environment that we're going to be in next year. So I'll support it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Um, I too support this. I think it's, I think it's difficult that we are in uncertain times and, uh, we need to be, you know, in tune to the fiscal environment, but I, I think overcrowding is very clear, and we've, we've made the case for why we need a tenth elementary, and short of that, I think we need to move forward with this. Um, we will move on to, um, the next item unless there's additional comments or feedback with regard to the mobile trailers. Okay, hearing, hearing none, uh, item six point five, AP Calculus textbook adoption. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. James Hayden, a secondary math coordinator, will present the information on the AP Calculus textbook adoption process this evening. Thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, and greetings, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to present our committee's recommendation for new AP Calculus textbooks for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. This textbook adoption aligns with goal one of the strategic plan, academic achievement, college and career readiness. Having textbooks and resource materials that align with the current standards ensures that students and teachers have instructional resources aligned with the Virginia Department of Education standards, the WJCC curriculum, and the College Board. Committee members, special thanks to everyone that served on this committee. Our high schools were represented by the AP Calculus teacher or teachers. Dr. Miami represented high school administrators. Mrs. Patty Bowen and Ann Skipper served as our technology department, um, from our technology department to ensure our online component of the adoption was compatible with our network, and Mr. Jim Kelly, who represented the school board. The textbook adoption process timeline. From mid-November to late February, our committee met four times to choose the right textbook for us. Meeting topics ranged from establishing a timeline and analyzing the results from our textbook rubric to selecting our textbook. Our initial meeting included an overview of the textbook adoption rubric, which included a teacher evaluation and equity portion. This rubric was sent to committee members. A numeric value of zero through five was assigned for each response and tabulated to give each textbook an overall score. On this date, the textbook adoption committee held a meeting via Zoom. We reviewed the results from our rubric and discussed which vendors would present for the onsite presentations. At our final meeting, vendors presented to the committee and our selection was finalized. The recommendation of the committee is AP Calculus, Calculus for AP Second Student Edition, plus web assign, which gives students a six-year access. Thank you for your attention. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I will begin with, um, Mr. Dowell, do you have questions or comments?
Uh, hi, Mr. Hayden, or Dr. Hayden, excuse me. Um, so the, the six-year access, um, that seems a little long to me, uh, but maybe can explain why a six-year access and are we paying for additional years?
No, we're not. That's standard with the adoption.
Okay. Yeah, I guess six years is standard then.
Yes, a standard with the adoption, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Ms., Ms. Hummel?
I'm just glad I don't have to take AP Calculus.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Young?
Yeah, I just have a question. If, if, uh, we put off buying this or purchasing this for a year, um, I, I understand that it aligns with, uh, the requirements, the, yes, so the, whatever, but, um, what happens if we just don't buy it this year?
Well, I would have a lot of angry teachers. Um, the textbook has not been, uh, we haven't had a new calculus book since two thousand and five, and many of the textbooks currently have been rebound twice, and they're in really bad shape. And, uh, last year, the College Board went through a revision, um, with a lot of different standards and, um, we really need to get up to par with, with, uh, AP and, um, College Central.
Okay, thank you very much for answering my question. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mrs. Cook?
Uh, I, I actually have a, a person in this household taking AP Calculus, uh, uh, online right now. Uh, so, uh, it's, I'm glad that they're getting new books and, um, I appreciate your, your work, Dr. Hayden, and, um,
Mr. Hayden, Mr. Hayden.
Sorry. Did someone say doctor earlier? Sorry.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you very much, and I don't have any questions, but I'm delighted that we're, uh, investing in this important resource.
Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
I, I've
I, I, I also support the adoption of this. Uh, yeah, when you have a textbook that's fifteen years old, that it's, it's time to move on and, and I and I, yeah, so I completely support this.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
I just, uh, Mr. Hayden, I want to just thank you and your teach, and the teachers at uh and administrators in your committee that did this. I know I got to look in at a lot of the good work that they were doing and a lot of the good participation that was uh part of this selection. And uh there was a, there was a lot of work, a lot of work done, and I just want to thank you and all of your team for the, for putting in that effort to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for serving as a school board member as well. Thank you um for sharing this information. I too support this. I think, again, it's, it's, it's long past due. So unless there are additional comments or feedback, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I've got one other question.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Right, Mr. Dowell?
I'm sure I missed it, but how old are the current textbooks?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen years.
Fifteen years. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. So, um, Mr. Dowell, I was gonna ask that you um move to approve the consent agenda, just remembering that we have pulled the financial report.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move that we do approve the consent agenda um with uh item seven point zero two, having moved to action items.
And is there a second, and then I'll, I will read the items?
Second.
Okay, and so uh this is approving uh the minutes and a special call meeting for March twenty fourth and personnel actions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Okay, moving on to action items. So we now have um rearranging these. So um item eight point one is the financial report and monthly bills and payroll.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the monthly financial report and the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for March twenty twenty.
And is um second, would you, thank you, and any discussion?
Uh, yeah, Madam Chair, the, the reason why I wanted to pull this off of the consent agenda is um for, for the benefit of the viewing public to understand uh the impact that so, that we're having for uh our current situation, particularly with the um the concern that I had when I first looked at that was that the, the jeopardy to our revenue for this fiscal year uh that we're currently in. Um, and I just wanted to give uh Dr. Heron and the administration an opportunity to talk about the impacts that we have uh, that we have uh factored into this current fiscal year so that they can, so that the public at, at large can be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Um, Ms. Ewing is going to address your question this evening.
Or so, um, the main impact that we're anticipating has to do with sales tax revenue. You know, when businesses have shut down, you know, sales tax coming in is gonna be on a decline. So this projection is estimating that we don't receive any sales tax revenue for the months of um May and June. We know that we'll receive some, but it's not gonna be as much as we typically get in a normal month. So that's what these projections reflect. It also reflects the most recent information that we have from the state related to our state revenue. Um, from March thirteenth, the DOE cap tools, um, we are anticipating some new cap tools either this week or next week from DOE. But my understanding from the last information I received is that there weren't any proposed changes by the governor to the fiscal year twenty um budget.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Are, are there additional comments or questions?
Yeah.
From your doctor here?
Yeah, so just a real quick, just to continue on. So as we go into, onto pages three and four, we talk about revised budget. Is that as a, as a result of the, of the revenue changes that we're talking here?
Um.
Where we have original budget and revised budget? Pages uh three and four.
I'm gonna get there so I can see.
No worries.
So the, the, we haven't revised our budget, so the original budget still matches the revised budget. We're just anticipating a reduction in our actual revenues um as we close out this fiscal year.
Okay, so, um, so the cafeteria fund, for instance, would be adjusted as well?
Um.
For food service.
Yes, so typically on our monthly financial, we include a projection for our general operating fund, since that is the majority of our funding. But I can provide a projection for you as well for the cafeteria fund.
Yes, since we're probably not gonna get a whole lot of revenue off of that for the, for the, the balance of the school year as well.
Correct, and we do have a projection that I can um share with you.
Okay, so I just wanted to thank you, thank you, Ms. Ewing, for uh, for the, the uh work on the budget and just to have that recognized by the public that, that we are adjusting um, are going forward based upon our current reality and not just going into the rest of the fiscal year with, with blinders on. So I just wanted to, uh, just wanted to make sure that was brought to the attention and uh appreciate uh the good work of you and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there additional comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to echo um Mr. Kelly's comments. I, I, I really do think that we need to, uh, really on a monthly basis, um, try, keep track of this. And, and, and the public does need to know that we're not, we're not just gonna be focusing on the next year that's coming up. We're dealing with this right now, that um we're looking at shortfalls. And it's really important that the public knows exactly um how it impacts us and what we're trying to do uh in order to maintain um the school system that we have here. I think, I think that's uh really important, and, and I think Ms. Ewing and, and the superintendent, um, anybody um that's dealing with the financial aspects of, 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 of our, our school system. Um, it, it's such important work. I can't say that enough. Well, I, I, and I also assume that um, cause I, I, you know, I saw it in a um, in part of the memo that superintendent sent out to us that um our financial people are meeting regularly with those in finance at the county and the city on a regular basis so that uh we're all, we may not always agree, but at least we all know what the numbers are. And I, and I think that's really, uh, I think it's really important. And, and as I said before, it's important that that be shared with the public.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Madam Chair, it's, um, I, I'd like to uh follow up on what Dr. Beer said and just respectfully request that this not be put on the consent agenda moving forward and be uh pulled out just uh until we're through the, the cry, the financial uh ramifications of the, of the crisis, or at least when it's not as fluid. Um, because I think right now it's still pretty fluid, and so rather than having to pull it out of consent every month, it's probably good to just yeah, uh craft the agenda so it's not in the consent agenda, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. That's a good idea. Additional comments? We have a motion. We have a second, so hearing no additional comments. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Okay, moving on to the new um eight point two, which is to approve resolution R dash fifteen dash twenty temporary suspension of policies and regulations. Ms. Hummel, would you make that motion, please? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry, um, I move that we approve resolution R fifteen twenty temporary suspension of policies and regulations.
Thank you. Ms. Cook, would you second that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But wait, wait, sorry, Mr. Kelly?
I was talking to the mute button, just like Mrs. Hummel was.
Sorry, I will wait longer next time.
No, I just gotta hit the mute button. Um, I'd just like to modify that to say through June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Yes.
So to modify the, modify the motion to say it's a, it's a temporary suspension.
Yes, do we want to say honor before June thirty?
Honor before June thirty, yes, you're right.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it? Or are we, okay?
I don't think you need to read it again, Julie.
Okay.
Any addition, any additional?
As a person who's seconded it, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Okay, I, hearing no additional comments, let's um call it, Ms. Serza.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Uh, moving on to item eight point three, Special Education Annual Plan for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. In the title, um, B Flow Through Funds. Mrs. Young, would you make a motion to approve that, please?
Yes, I, Madam Chair, I, I move that we approve the Special Education Annual Plan twenty twenty to twenty one, twenty twenty-one, and the title be IB Flow Through Funds.
Thank you. And Dr. Beers, would you second that, please? Thank you. Any discussion? Is everyone off mute? Yes. All right, hearing no additional comments or questions, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, what happened?
Here.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Okay, item eight point four, Carl D. Perkins Grant. Mr. Kelly, would you move, we approve that?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the local plan and budget for a CTE Carl D. Perkins Grant for a school year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one as presented this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Dowell, would you second that?
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item eight point four, Award Contracts to Mobile Lease Modular Space Inc. for Temporary Mobile Educational Classroom Trailer at Jamestown High School and Stonehouse Elementary School. Mr. Dowell, would you make that motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board award contracts to Mobile Lease Modular Space Inc. for temporary mobile educational classroom trailer at Jamestown High School and Stonehouse Elementary, Elementary School in the amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand sixteen dollars for the four-year lease period.
Thank you. Ms. Hummel, would you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
No.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Okay, moving on to item eight point six, AP Calculus textbook adoption. Dr. Beers, would you move that?
Yes, I move that the uh school board approved the adoption of the Cengage Learning AP Calculus textbook.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
No.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item eight point seven, Superintendent's Contract. I just want to make it clear that um the wording of the superintendent's contract is being changed to meet updated Virginia VRS guidelines on credible compensation, which was issued last August twenty nineteen. No changes are being made to the terms of the original contract. Mr. Kelly, would you make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Williamsburg James City County School Board approve the proposed technical amendments to section three of the superintendent's contract to clarify that the annuity payments may be included in credible compensation in accordance with VRS guidance. These proposed amendments do not make substantial changes to the superintendent's contract.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel, would you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I would just like to reiterate uh your comments earlier that this does not make any changes to the superintendent's current compensation or future compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any additional comments? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Um.
Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Okay, moving on to uh board matters. Uh, typically, we would announce upcoming events uh during this section of the agenda. Um, our board committees have not been meeting face to face. Um, and I know we hopefully will be receiving some initial guidance from the governor, hopefully tomorrow. Um, I know that, that all of our committees typically report their annual, um, their provider in report to us in June. So I, I guess we're kind of stay tuned um so that um the public and those committees have some guidelines for how they'll be able to, to meet, whether virtually to get those reports to us. And then uh oh, I skipped board, I, I skipped board member comments. I'm gonna come back to that. I'm, I'm sorry. Let me just do the meeting schedule and then I'll come back to comments. So, um, well, never never, no, sorry, I'm sorry. Let's just do board member, board member comments, and I'm gonna start with Mr. Dowell. Board member comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, well, I, I, I just want to say thank you to uh Mr. Kelly for moving the financials on to the action items so that we can take a little closer look on that and uh give uh our community members and our funding partners a better glimpse into uh Dr. Heron and staff's uh efforts to mitigate the uh, the financial crisis that we're experiencing and will be experiencing for whatever duration that we're into here. So I appreciate that, Mr. Kelly. Um, you know, I, I'm getting emails and phone calls um not regularly, but, and not unreasonably either. And those questions are about um next year. And so I think it was uh really uh, a, a good act on, on the board's part to highlight what's happening this year, right? And so we're not living in a bubble. We're not on a island on our own. We understand that we're all in this together. And decisions that we make today, next week will impact next year and, and the years to come as well. And so um I just want to say that uh, you know, we have a board here that understands that um there's probably going to be a budget amendment or a, a adoption that comes back to us for amendment. And uh so we just have to kind of follow that process, understanding that when it does come back to us and that we still have a responsibility to build a budget of need. And uh at the same time, understanding that the financial implications, um, the ability for our funding partners to support that budget of need uh will be different than what it was on March twenty-fourth. So just to assure and reassure our community members that they do have a board here, a school, school board that understands that and is eager to um, to put forward a, a budget of need that fits the economic outlook right now. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Ms. Hummel?
Um, sure. Thank you, uh, Mr. Dowell, for those comments. I, I uh, I agree with all of them. Uh, our community is particularly hard-hit uh because so much of our revenue is tourism-based. And we are looking at, I think, just some incredibly difficult choices that we're gonna have to be making in the next year. Um, really, really hard decisions. And um we will work through them together, keeping uh the goals of the school system at the forefront. Um, and especially the needs of our kids. And we will uh persevere through all of this, but it is not going to be a fun ride for any of us. And um I just wanna say that it's, it's hard. I, I think when so many people are working so hard to um to serve our students right now. to, to serve our students right now and then knowing that the future is so uncertain. So I want everyone to know how much I appreciate the hard work that they're doing, all the teachers, all the parents, the children, everybody just struggling through this together, but keeping our eye hopefully on the light at the end of the tunnel, no matter how far away that tunnel is. And then also wanted to thank the speakers tonight. We do care for, to hear what our, our parents, their concerns. I do want to tell some of the parents that are concerned about grades and situations like that for getting into colleges. From my perspective, working at William &amp; Mary, everything is upended, everything. So not to be so overly, overly concerned with what is happening in the spring of 2020 as, with regard to college admissions. Just please don't worry all that much about that. It will work itself out. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Young?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank our school personnel who made this meeting possible tonight. It's, it's interesting to, to be meeting this way. So I do appreciate that, that that was arranged. It's important for the community to know that the school division is actively working to make this unusual time in our history work for our families and our students. I've had several parents tell me how much more respect they have for teachers, that they're actually, their respect is multiplied as they have worked with their students. And the memes that are coming out kind of go with that. I, I saw one today that, that talked about the family was fighting over the homework. And one of the kids said, yeah, it was our pep rally. So I thought that was cute. But my favorite one so far is homeschooling day three. And the parent wrote, they all graduated done. So I think a lot of parents are feeling the pressure of that. But I want to thank our parents for working for their children. This is going to pass at some point. So just keep up the good effort. And I want to commend our students. One of the things I, I thought about is I hope that they are in some way recording this experience to share their, their future life. Because never in my life has this happened. So they are actually living history. We are all living history right now. And so I, I hope that they remember that and that they will be able to tell their children and grandchildren about it someday. I regret that there's not going to be any graduation for our students this year because it's such a rite of passage. But I want you to know that I will be thinking of you as graduates after the end of the school year and you will still be adults. So just remember that. And I do appreciate what Ms. Hummel said, not to worry about colleges and universities. They're, they all know what's going on, just like we do. But one of the things I wanted to say, that none of us who have been affected by this pandemic are living in a vacuum. Most of us, including myself, as a member of the school board, are aware of the impact this shutdown has produced. The economic realities and uncertainties are very real, especially in this area where we depend so much upon tourism. I hope that will, that will work to resolve the many issues that we remain, that we have, that will remain calm and deliberate in our decision-making. It's not just students that we affect, but families and ultimately the community. I believe that we are in this together and that will work the two things. And I appreciate our funding partners and I'm sure that they understand that also. I just want to hope that you all stay well and take care of yourself and your loved ones. That's all I have to say. Lisa, thank you.
Thanks so much, Mrs. Young. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to echo everyone's thanks to staff and parents and students for working so hard to figure, you know, to make this work and make this spring a successful and full of new ways of learning. I'd also like to thank Dr. Herron for her thoughtful and steadfast and calm leadership. It's really critical at times like this. And also just like to extend a special thanks to Chair Ombi for her hurricane leaning efforts to, you know, figure out a new way to do business. There's always little details here and there. And you've worked with attorneys and each board member and, and with our clerks, Ms. Serza, who's done a wonderful job. It's just a completely new way of doing business. And I just wanted to publicly thank you for that. I also wanted to add on that, what my colleagues have already said about our awareness of new economic reality. Our, our major anchor institutions in our community, Colney Williamsburg and William &amp; Mary are dramatically, have dramatically been impacted. And that has ripple effects in our tourism economy as well. But, you know, this is, the localities have really tough decisions to make right now with regard to next year's budgets. The city, Mr. Trivitt presented to his board, to city council, his plans to stabilize the, the budget next year and use reserves. We're not sure yet what the county's going to do. But I think it's time for everyone to advocate if, if in support of public education. So I hope that our teachers and our parents do reach out to James City County Board of Supervisors to let them know what they're thinking. This is a difficult time. They have very difficult decisions to make. I don't envy them. But everyone makes better decisions together. So the more public input, the better. So I would encourage everyone to reach out and let them know what they think. In my view, this is really a time to support public education because next year's, next year, our kids are going to need every resource they can have to, to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I also echo everything that's already been said, so I don't have to say quite as much as I might want to say. I would very much like to thank staff, Trivitt Superintendent, for really staying totally on top of, of what's going on during this crisis. And even though I'm, I, you know, I, I paused a little bit with Zoom. I also want to thank all those that I see and all those that I don't see that helped make that possible. That's, it's very extraordinary and it could be a trend that, that we follow in the, in the future. I, I also echo, echo the comments about our financial challenges that we face now and the ones that we face in the future. Not just the school division, but the city and county as well. And, and sincerely hope that all three entities see eye to eye as we move forward, you know, through this crisis and, and into the future. The only other thing I would say is to our, to my fellow board members, but also to the public, be safe, be thoughtful of other people and others around you. Please follow the guidelines and, and, and really the requirements that have been put forward by highly educated, very, very well-versed medical folks. We really do control an awful lot of that. And if we can bear to not see our friends quite the way we have in the past, I think that would be really helpful for all of us. But that's what I would say is be safe, be, 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 be well and be thoughtful of the others around you.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are truly unprecedented times. And I appreciate the opportunity to meet virtually here because I've always wanted to have a Brady Bunch moment, you know, to, so, that's kind of, that's kind of, and Mrs. Young, you know, the memes that you're talking about, my favorite one is homeschool day, whatever. The kids aren't locked out. We're having a fire drill. So that was my favorite. So, but I appreciate, I appreciate the work that has gotten an opportunity to meet virtually, although I, I really think that it's important that we do meet in public, in front of the public. But these are not those times. This is, these are times that we, to Dr. Beers, you know, we need to social distance and we need to, we need to quarantine. And I, I really appreciate the opportunity to do that and feel much more comfortable this meeting than I did the last meeting. And I, I have to echo all my colleagues when they talk about the teachers and the administrators and the changes that have had, been had to make on the fly unbelievably quickly to provide an education for our students for the fourth quarter. And this, this year, it's, they've done a tremendous amount of work. They've done great work. I really appreciate the great job that they've done. It's just, it's, it's really truly amazing to me. And I think that everybody has much more appreciation for teachers and teaching and education of our students than they did previous to this. So as, as far as our budget for next year, you know, when we voted on our budget last meeting, we knew that, we knew that we had to do it. We had the, the law requires that we forward it to the funding partners on the first of April. We knew we were going to have to make changes. It was, it was as fluid as it is now. It was much more fluid then. So, you know, we had, we were caught in that conflict between meeting the April 4th deadline, April 1st deadline and a budget of need, a budget of need. We know that there's going to be significant pain. We know that there's going to be a lot of changes going forward. And as Mrs. Cook said, it's now's the time to advocate because there is going to, there's going to be a lot of difficult challenges that's going to be had to made at all levels of government, all levels of governments, significant challenges, significant decisions. And so, you know, I'd ask the community to, to make sure they stay involved. Appreciate Mr. Dowell's comments about pulling the, the monthly financials. I think that's, that was, that was an important thing to have a discussion in front of the, in front of the public on that. And I'd also like to echo others and Mr. Beers about, Dr. Beers, about making sure everybody stays safe and stays healthy. You know, this is, this, these are tough times. And so just everybody just do the right things and make the right decisions and we'll all get through this together. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And so going last, I definitely have to say, I echo every single thing that each one of my board members has said tonight, starting with thanks. I've mentioned to some of my own colleagues at my day job, the amount of effort that it's taken all of staff to, to pull together a virtual meeting is, is way more intense than a regular face-to-face. And so while I'm glad we're able to meet this way, I look forward to the days when we can just walk into the annex or one of the county or city buildings and have a meeting. So thank you to all the staff, Superintendent, for your leadership and for everyone who's working behind the scenes to make this happen. And then I think just, it's very clear by listening to each of our board members how important the budget is to us and how we are acutely aware to our current fiscal situation. And I can't, I can't say enough to the broader community. It is, it's time to advocate. And our funding partners are going to have to make very difficult budget decisions. We will as well. But I think it's quite clear that our school system is, quite frankly, directly related to, there's a correlation between how, how well our school division performs and personal property values. So everyone in this community, Williamsburg and James City, should be vested in our school system. And so then just wanted to share a couple of things. As a mom, I was glad that two of my kids went back to school today. And so I made sure that they were up bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and logging in. And it was funny listening to teachers talk in my dining room. I had to do a double take as I, I heard our band instructor talking to my son. It was a pre-recorded lesson, but it's, it's, it's kind of neat too, to bring our teachers into our homes. We definitely miss them. And I know our students miss our teachers as well. And then as Ms. Hummel said, just wanted to speak to some of the parents. And I know many have, have emailed me who are concerned about the grading system. And all I can say is that nothing is perfect right now. And I think patience is something that we all need to, to honor and recognize. But I think across the country and the world, quite frankly, everyone's going to have a COVID-19 notation on their transcript. And so higher ed is certainly in the same boat. And so I would encourage folks to, to, to take a deep breath and, and know that we are all in this together. One of the things that is so sad for me right now is that typically this time of year, we would be recognizing the Teachers of the Year, which we've done virtually. And so I encourage the community, if you haven't done that, to log on. And I know we've been doing social media blast. But we would be having the pinning ceremonies and retirement ceremonies and all of our theater students who worked so hard at secondary level, middle school and high school to put on their plays. That's, that's very sad. And I, and hopefully this will be the last time we have to not have those kinds of ceremonies and recognitions. And, and Ms. Young spoke to graduation. I think it's clear graduation is not going to look like it has in the past. Maybe in a few minutes, when I'm done speaking, Dr. Herron can speak to the possibility of a graduation. I know there's still conversations about that. So I don't want folks to think that a decision has been made necessarily about what graduation will look like. We know, like with so many things, it will look very different. So with those thoughts, just want to let the community know to stay tuned. I think the division has done a really great job of communicating with families and with students. And again, thank you to all of our teachers for being so flexible and working with our students. So before I move on to the meeting schedule, Dr. Herron, can you speak for a second about graduation?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ombi. Yes, no decision has been made yet about graduation. We are in conversation with divisions across Region 2. I'm still in discussion about what's possible in the months ahead. But we're looking at all kinds of options. And hopefully we'll find a really good way to celebrate and honor our seniors.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Okay, so with that, then move on to the meeting schedule. So typically, we would have two meetings in May. We will condense those. And most likely, that will be another virtual meeting on May 19th. June, we will also condense. And so we'll have a meeting on June 16th. And who knows, maybe that will be a face-to-face meeting. So stay tuned for that. And as I mentioned earlier, I think we'll have some more guidance for our advisory committees with, with when and how they'll be able to meet. So unless there are additional thoughts or information folks would like to share, I am going to move to adjourn.
Everybody be safe, be healthy.
Be safe, be healthy. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.